Let's make sure we got good audio.
All right, there we go. How about now?
Oh, much better. Thank you.
I forgot to turn-
Like, man, I knew my hearing was bad, but.
Forgot to turn my microphone on. Sorry about that.
Okay. So Ken, I'm assuming you're not starting the meeting at all?
That's correct, ma'am. He's on the road.
Okay. All right, well, it's after nine, so I guess we'll get the show on the road. Like to call to order the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners. This is Wednesday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, just after nine a.m. Agenda action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of Commissioners convening it up as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serves the Liquor Board, since our Lyon Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River We Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. Please take note that this meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Roll call. We've got Ken Gray on Zoom on the road, and it looks like I have Commissioner Hockaday, Commissioner Henderson, and Commissioner Jacobson running for his seat in chambers. At this time, I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So Jeff, if you could please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, we will entertain public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The Board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the Board takes any action. Afterwards, please print your name for the clerk's desk, or if you're on Zoom, please spell your name. So do I have anybody for public comment at this time for something that's not on the agenda?
Nobody in this, ma'am.
Okay, and I'm not seeing anybody on Zoom either, correct?
Correct.
Okay. For possible action, review and adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the and adopt the agenda, all, excuse me, public comment. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, that brings us to item five for the Comptroller, five A for possible action. Approved tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Foley.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a statement before we start, if I may.
Uh, okay.
Thank you.
It wasn't on the agenda, okay?
I, I, I understand, but I, I feel this, this statement has to be made. NRS two eight one A dot four two zero requires me to disclose a conflict of interest. A very small portion of the tentative budget before this body may affect my commitment in a private capacity to the interest of my wife. She is employed by the medical provider that is the contractor for medical services at the jail. Her job is not dependent on, on approval of this budget, and her employment is not impacted one way or the other with the approval of the tentative budget. Therefore, I conclude that the independence of judges judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by this relationship. And because this is not a clear case of a disqualifying conflict of interest, I will be participating in this hearing and I'm going to be voting on the tentative budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Just real quickly before moving on, was there anybody else? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Foley, you're up.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. I would like to offer the Board an option at this time, option A or option B. Option A is a shorter option, which is I can do a high-level overview and go through significant items in the budget and then answer any additional questions the Board may have. And option B would be to go page by page as we've traditionally done in the past. So I am open to either approach. I think with this particular budget, we could easily do option A and available to cover it and save some time for yourselves. Up to you.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that, Mr. Foley. I, I liked the summary view, and then if somebody has specific questions, we can poll that and, and discuss it. What would the Board like to entertain?
Madam Vice Chair, I'm, I'm good with Oshane.
Commissioner- Madam Vice Chair, I'm sorry to cut in front of you, Mr. Hockaday.
No, that's fine.
You pray up late with the water meeting Monday night anyhow. I, I'm fine with option A. I do have just a couple of questions as I went through it, but I think option A worked for me. Mr. Hockaday, what's your flavor?
I totally agree. Option A works for me.
Okay, well, Mr. Foley, let's go with option A, and then we have specifics. We could address them individually.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm just gonna do a, a quick synopsis of changes from prior to, to current year. Significant changes and approaches to the budget. The first one is that we changed the tax rate in the general fund. We decreased it by four point three cents in the recommended budget and moved that to the silver and gold fund, which is for our senior services. We also decreased the tax rate in the medical indigent fund to the minimum required by statute and moved an additional one point seven cents from the medical indigent fund into the silver and gold fund. And that replaced the utility license fees that we had previously allocated in silver and gold fund. So eight hundred thousand dollars in utility license fees in the silver and gold fund were then put back into the general fund where they used to be. And then the general fund actually decreased two hundred thousand dollars of those and moved those into the road fund to provide funding. And I'll, I'll cover the reasons why in a little bit. Just so everyone is aware what utility license fees are when you pay your gas bill or your electric bill. If you happen to be in an unincorporated area of the county, there's a, a five percent rate that's levied on for the county on that bill, and it comes to the county to provide governmental services. And so that's what those funds are, and we're putting all of those in the general fund with the exception of what goes to the road fund. What this allows us to do in the silver and gold fund is eliminate the, the Human Services Director from coming every year and saying, I need more money, I need more money. Her revenues will actually grow as the tax goes, just like it does in every other fund. And so she's able to have a sustainable source of revenue by doing a tax rate from year to year. And so that was the, the major impetus for doing this. I would love to do the same with the road fund, but there are a number of reasons why that's not practical at this point. And so we put utility license fees into that to make up the difference between what its operations are and what the gas taxes provided in that fund, because those provide the lion's share of the funding there. The other change is we did increase the salary table, salaries across the board for all appointed officials by four percent pursuant to the contracts that we have with our associations. We also have a two and a half percent merit upon their anniversary date built into the contract as well. The justice of the pieces, they are elected. We did do a four percent salary increase recommendation for them, and the rationale behind that was that we're going to forty-eight hour bail hearings, which effectively means there's a strong potential for a seven-day-a-week work week for those people. We're hopeful to alternate some of that so that they don't have to work every day of the week, every week, every week of the year. And so, but it still is a significant time commitment for, commitment for them, so we did increase the salaries. We increased some of the salaries on the legal side too, and I'll discuss those when we get to those budgets. But that's, that's a high-level overview of, of just the, the changes and methodology in the budgets. So let's, we'll go into the revenues, but before we get to those pages, let me just give you a high-level overview as well of our economy. You're hearing the news, but I'm gonna try and take what's happening in the news and bring it down to what's gonna happen at Lyon County's level. I gave a similar presentation to the Board in two thousand and eight. So this is kind of remembrance of the past for some of us.
So in other words, you're the Grim Reaper?
I'm the Grim Reaper. We're not there yet. It took until two thousand and eleven for us to really bottom out on that, but it started the trend. So what we're looking at in the economy right now is we're looking at, in many places, double-digit inflation, which is significant. We didn't even have that back in two thousand and eight. In fact, we were closer to deflation and we were inflation back then. But we're looking at inflation, significant inflation, which makes for our budget the contingency significantly more important this coming year than it has been in prior years. Because if costs for us to purchase supplies and fuel and all of those things continue to increase as we go forward, which traditionally they will, then we have to use that contingency, because we build the best budget on methodology. Tell us what you need based on today's prices. Don't try and build in contingency in every line item across the board. That's why we have a contingency. And so they're building in what it costs today for the most part. Fuel might be a small exception. We did increase that slightly. In addition to that, gas prices are going up. What we normally see when gas prices go up, additional inflation on our purchasing power. It also impacts significantly departments like the Sheriff's Department and the Road Department as far as their fuel prices. In addition, and the oil prices for the Road Department for doing almost any road work. And the gas price revenue in the road fund and RTC fund traditionally decreases as we do that. Now, we didn't project for a decrease. I use the state's projections for those revenues, knowing that we're more than likely not going to, to get that unless the ship turns really quickly the other direction. So what does all of those mean to us? Consolidated taxes probably are not going to come in where projected. They usually, when inflation is happening, gas prices are going up. The consolidated tax sales portion go down because people are spending money on essentials and not spending as much on the other items, and so we don't give as much revenue there. In addition to that, building permits traditionally drop in an environment like that because with interest rates going up, that decreases the price of homes and decreases the amount of new construction, which also in turn decreases building permit and consolidated taxes. And then, of course, the gas tax is already talked about. So high-level overview of that again, we're probably not going to get the revenues that we budgeted for. But we budgeted conservatively, so I think we'll be all right. We'll just go throughout the year and watch the contingencies as we go. We also have one other major expense that's coming down the pipe towards us, which is a capital case, capital mortgage case. Last time we had one of those, it cost us in excess of a million dollars at county level. I wouldn't be surprised with inflation and everything since then that we're looking at potentially two million dollars hard dollars out of our pocket for that. Now, we are hopeful that the Department of Indigent Defense will fund a significant portion of that, if not all of that, for us through the state legislature. But depending on what happens at the state level, the next legislature, because this trial is gonna go for many years. By the time it goes all the way through discovery and all the way through the initial trial and appeals process and all of that, it seems like it takes anywhere from four to five years to go all the way through that process. So it's not like it's gonna happen right away. So the legislature could say, hey, we're only gonna allocate X dollar amounts in any given year to reimburse the counties for this. So it's possible we're gonna be footing some of that bill as we go forward. So I just want to put that out there. Right now, we're not anticipating it, but it's something to keep our, keep our mind around and, and keep, keep in the back of our mind at least. So let's move on to revenues. So you first have in your, your budget of revenue projections. We'll go to page one. And these are just general fund revenue comparisons. We can take a look at the add the lower tax. And for the upcoming year, we're projecting the general fund. It's gonna go up three point six four percent. Part of that is because we're decreasing the tax rate there, moving some of the tax rate into the silver and gold fund. Consolidated tax revenue, very similar increase to the prior year, estimated nine point nine three percent. Again, not anticipating it's gonna stay at that amount with the economy the way it is. That very well could not even make it up to that level, but we'll keep an eye on that as we go. Let's move on to the next page, which would be page two. That's just a graph of tax rates that the county has showing that for the past ten years, the tax rate in total for the county hasn't changed. We've moved it around between funds at times, depending on where the need was, as we're doing this year. Allocating six cents to silver and gold, decreasing the tax rate in the general fund of the medical indigent fund. But the total tax rate for the county is staying the same. We go to page three. That just shows the tax rates over the past handful of years in the general funds. You can see it's actually decreasing again because we're moving that tax rate. We'll move on to page four. You can see the general fund revenue, and I, I took the general fund revenue and excluded the grants. So you can see what our base operating budget is from year to year without looking at that. And we're projected to increase in total seven point three percent. Then we can move on to page five, which is what our assessed valuation did for the year. The top part of that page shows actual assessed valuation. The bottom part of that page is a graph of the percentage change in assessed valuation. So we're actually increasing four, fourteen point three five percent. Revenues do not go up by that amount because there is a tax cap in place on your primary residence. It can only go three percent. If it's a non-primary residence, general rule is it can only go up, up to eight percent. This year, we are at those caps, three percent, eight percent. Some years, it was actually point one percent. And so we are, are doing that, and if the sales tax revenue goes down, we can usually count on this to keep us afloat for a little while, but it's only about twenty-five to thirty percent of your revenues. So just keep that in mind. So let's move in the general kind. Let's move on to the next page, page six. This is the tax revenue for property taxes, and you can see the top again is the total property tax revenue. The bottom is the change. We're anticipating to go up nine point eight percent. Now, the question may come up, why is it nine point eight percent when we're capped at eight percent, three percent? Well, new growth comes in at full value, and so all of the new houses that were built in the past year, all of the new equipment that was put in at Nevada Copper, which is hundreds of millions of dollars, all came onto the roll, and so we are seeing a higher amount than the tax cap because of the new amounts. We'll move on to page seven. Now we're looking at just the general fund property tax revenue. Keep in mind, this is somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent of the general fund revenue. Percentage change, we're looking at three point six percent increase. We'll move on to the next page, page eight. This is our consolidated tax revenue, again, current year and next year are projections. Because right now, I only have revenue through January consolidated tax. So I still have another five months worth of revenue that we're just gonna have to see what happens with inflation and everything else. May not come in as high as projected, but we're looking at nine point nine percent increase. This is almost fifty percent of our general fund revenue coming in right here. So this is what's helping us to add new positions in the recommended budget this next year is because we have this going up much higher than the four percent salary increases that we're, we're looking at. Let's move on to page nine. If we combine consolidated property tax revenue and the general fund together, this shows you your dollar amount. And so it's seven and a half percent increase for this upcoming year. So we've had a, a handful of good years, the past three years have been really good to the county, which is why we have added positions over the past three years. Prior to that, it was few and far between, and we added significant amounts of positions. This year, we're able to add a lot more because of that dynamic. Going forward with the economy going the way it is, we may see more challenges with that as we go forward. So those are the revenues. Do we have any questions before I move on to capital? Hearing none, we'll move on forward to the next tab, Capital Outlay on page ten. This is a synopsis of all the governmental requests for capital outlay for this upcoming fiscal year. It does not include the utilities. We will go and take care of those individually. It also shows the recommended funding, which fund that these will come out, will be paid out, I should say. So let me walk through them one by one. Some of them I can gloss over, some of them I want to spend a little more time on. The first request is for a new camera and microphone system for the Commissioner Chambers. It's sixty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I put it in here. There was a request or discussion about, about the Board. Wasn't actually a formal request, but I put it in. It is recommended in the budget, but I want to bring it up so the Board understands what it is. If you decide you want to spend money on that or not, we, the recommended budget is just that. We're recommending you come in and tell us what tweaks that you prefer because this is the lion's share of the most important thing that this Board does on a annual basis is oversee the budget for the, for the county. So what sixty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars gets you is a portion of what you saw in the city of firmly when you went to the council chambers. Their system actually was two hundred thousand dollars, significantly more intricate than ours. Our recommendation would be if the Board chooses to adopt it. And what it would do in these chambers would provide three cameras that would have the capability to zoom in on whichever microphone is speaking. There would be a delay of three seconds from the time someone starts speaking until it zooms in on that person. So what you would get is you would have a camera similar to what you have today that shows the entire board. And then when someone starts speaking, three seconds after that, it will zoom in on whatever Commissioner or public comment or someone as myself sitting here is talking, zoom in on their face. So you would have that capability to see in. It also would change the microphones just for the Board of County Commissioners up there to include us a little button that you would push, and it would change the color from red to green. There would be a display panel in front of the chair that would light up saying Commissioner wants to speak. So then the Board Chair knows I have someone who wants to speak or multiple people. The person speaks, push a button that when they're speaking, it takes the light off the Commissioners. Besides that, it functions exactly the same as everything that we have right now. That would be what the sixty-six thousand, four seventy-eight would purchase if the Board chooses that that's something they want to do. So any questions on that before I move forward?
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
As we go hit on certain items like that, do you want to get the flavor of the Board now or at the end?
You know, it's your preference. It, it may be faster if we get it now, but we can definitely go through and do it at the end. It's up to you.
I just know in, in the past, you know, I've done a few budgets. If we hold everything to the end, people lose track of their thoughts on an item, and so I would prefer that we kind of address certain ones as we go. And so with that being said, I have a hard time knowing that with the inflation and everything, I felt like when you were speaking in the beginning, deja vu, been here, done this. So I have a hard time spending sixty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, I think is what the total is, just so that a camera can zoom in on somebody that's speaking. As far as the microphones having a red or green, we've only got five Board members. I don't feel that we've had an issue with ignoring any one Commissioner, whether or not they wanted to speak. So I have issues with allowing this, but I will allow the other Commissioners. Commissioner Gray has his hand up. Let's address him first, and I'll come back to the Board.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more. I am all for technology, but this is crazy, especially when there was so much heartburn and consternation just about getting, you know, I, you know, what I feel is a, a very important thing, you know, getting Wi-Fi down to Smith Valley. There's no way we can justify this to the taxpayers. This is wrong.
Okay, Commissioners in chambers. I'll just start at one side to the other. I'm sorry, who was that?
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Madam Vice Chair. This is Commissioner Jacobson. I agree, I'd rather move this sixty-six thousand dollars to probably the contingency fund would be my recommendation if we can do that. But, but nobody needs to zoom in on me for sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson or Commissioner Hockaday, any comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm actually the one that brought this up. You know, I am really happy with the Zoom participation that we have gotten for our meetings. However, if you look, and especially you right now, Vice Chair, you know, when you look at, all you see basically is the back of Josh's head and a, and a dais for people you can't even identify. I, so I was looking at this to enhance the Zoom experience for our constituents. However, it's not something that I am married to in any way. If we'd rather keep it the way it is, so that it's really hard to see online, that's fine too.
Commissioner Hockaday.
Well, I'm always afraid to spend money when we have a system that is working. So I agree, move it to contingency or wherever else we have an essential need.
Okay, Mr. Foley, do you need that in a form of a motion, or do you get to take the consensus to the end?
What I will do with your permission is I will make a list of all the changes that the Board addresses as we go forward. And when we get to the end, I will outline those so that can be in the form of a motion for the Board.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And if I'm not speaking right now, it's because I'm trying to write at the same time, and so give me just a second.
What, you can't walk and chew gum?
Take your time, Mr. Foley. If you need a note taker, Mr. Henderson will volunteer.
Okay, I will move forward.
That was good, Rob. That was good.
Okay, so moving down, we do have replacement vehicles. I'm just gonna mention them as we pass through each one and just let you know the methodology we use when we decide whether to do a replacement vehicle or not. Traditionally, what happens is the Road Department goes through and evaluates the mileage and the condition and the maintenance costs on each vehicle each year, and also discusses with the department heads on how those vehicles are functioning for them. And they will come and make a recommendation on which vehicles need to be replaced or new vehicles purchased. And so that's a methodology that we use traditionally, unless we're getting a vehicle that's really causing problems. You're looking right around two hundred thousand miles for everything outside of the Sheriff's Office, and we use a general rule of thumb of around a hundred and fifty thousand miles on Sheriff's vehicles because that doesn't reflect the true powers on the engine, because they keep the car running to keep the batteries charged so that they can use their laptops and their radio system at all times. And so it may have two hundred thousand miles worth of usage on it, but part of that is idle usage, so.
Madam Vice Chair, Commissioner Jacobson, I was just curious on replacement vehicles with the cost of used vehicles. Now, do we, when we sell those, does that come back and offset some of these?
So we will bring those in, and we just show that as a revenue in whichever fund the vehicle is purchased out of. So if the Road Fund sells a vehicle that's for each end of its useful life for us, we will sell it, but that revenue is revenue into that fund.
Thank you, sir.
Also, the Board should be aware that there are many instances where the shop will keep a number of vehicles for parts. A recent example is we had a vehicle that had a, I can't remember what the mechanical problem was. We had a crashed vehicle that, again, nothing wrong with the engine. The mechanic pulled the engine out of that vehicle, put it in the other vehicle, and we're, we're ready to go. So we do keep the vehicles also for parts as necessary.
And we'll move on. Facilities is requested that we replace the HVAC units on the building that we're in right now. Well, many of us are in right now, the administrative complex. And instead of doing them, one recommendation was we could do it half one year, half another year. But you have to pay for a crane to come on site, and so we'd rather do them all in one year. And we're well over twenty years on these units, so we can get more efficient units and ones where they're not on a regular basis on the roof, trying to get them to function properly. So that's the hundred and forty thousand for that. We have fifty-one thousand for the- We have fifty-one thousand for the Silver City Community Center and thirty thousand for the Dayton Community Center for, to convert them from swamp coolers to HVAC systems. What we find many times, especially when you have areas that you have elderly people in, is those swamp coolers do not drop the temperature below probably eighty-five, ninety degrees in the summertime. Many times we, we have a need for people to be using those buildings to have those be a little more climate controlled for the people who are there. So that's the thought process there.
Plus swamp coolers waste water.
True, thank you.
This is swamp coolers waste water.
So then, we'll move on to a replacement vehicle, a truck for our facilities. And then a replacement vehicle for the public guardian, that one's reached the end of its life. Walker River Justice Court's bailiff vehicle, they've been asking for years for this one to be replaced. We told them the reason why it doesn't shift smoothly when you start it up is because you weren't driving on a regular basis. But with the evictions over the past year, they've been putting a lot more miles on this going to Silver Springs and, and around this area of the county. The south area of the county. For the sheriff's office, we have nine vehicles being replaced. Part of those are being funded out of the vehicle acquisition fund and part out of the general fund. We would love to reform a lot of vehicle acquisition fund, which is paid for by brothel fees. We used to give three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars a year in that before the before the pandemic, now we're bringing in around a hundred and sixty-five thousand ish each year. So, we're funding, we save up so we have enough cash there, so when we order it, we have the cash to do it. So, we've gotten to the point that we have a year's worth, and so we're paying for three vehicles in the recommended budget out of the vehicle acquisition. Then we'll move down to the parks and rec, they had requested a metal building in Dayton to be able to have a a spot for staff and a lot of their equipment to keep it in one location of the south plant. We didn't include that in the recommended budget. The reason why, I would love to fund this one, by the way, the reason why is we have two large capital projects that we're trying to get accomplished right now that are further down on the list. One of those is to replace the Dayton Justice Court and some of the other offices in Dayton. We're looking at an approximate cost right now, not including improvements to Dayton Valley Road and minor road of approximately twenty-three million dollars for that. We have the public safety complex to change the Sheldon space to become usable space upstairs. Remodel the district court space, and that's estimated to come in around ten million dollars at this point. So, just to give you an idea where we're at, we're probably two to three years out from having the cash to do the upstairs at the district court. We're also probably four to five years out from having the cash. Throwing everything that we can at this to be able to get this building done on the Dayton government complex. So, with that being said, let me move back up and say, that is the primary reason why we're not recommending doing something like this. And we're not talking an extravagant metal building. We went out and asked at the justice complex to do a water softener, to add on a twelve by twelve metal shed. The one side was already built because it's part of the building. And just add on a lean to really on the side of the building metal, twelve by twelve was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Is what the estimate came back on, and so the five hundred thousand dollars doesn't get you a Taj Mahal, it doesn't give you a significantly large building. But, we're trying to save up money for those two projects, and that's why it's not the recommended budget. Again, the board can, can tweak this as we go, but that was the thought process. I see a question.
Yeah. We're talking just a straight metal building. Saying a twelve by twelve, straight metal bill, like what we bought for a couple hundred bucks years and years ago. Yet, a place like, say, Out West Building sells a ten by twenty wooden structure for ten thousand dollars. I'm just wondering how we are being taken by getting, getting a metal building. Are they substantially better than, say, a wood construction building and can't use them, not sure.
So I would leave that facilities, I think he's.
This, this is Doug, facilities director. What the deal was is there's not any room at the justice center for this building, so it has to be engineered because we have to run the sprinkler system into it. Tie the smoke detectors, all that into this thing, so they came up with an estimate of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Right now, we have a proposal to probably get it done, I just sent it to Josh not too long ago and it was, we're going to put it in a supply room. That, but we have to run three inch pipe for seventy feet back and forth. So it's copper pipe, of course, is pretty expensive, but it's going to be more economical to do it that way. So I'm in favor of not, you know, not doing that project this year, but we'll do the water softener in a different, different room.
Commissioner Gray, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Vice. Yeah, I, I have a very hard time supporting this also. The purpose of this is going to be solely to support equipment, Josh, is this correct?
Mr. Homestead? Since we have Mr. Homestead on the, on the line, Doug, can you talk about the metal building in Dayton you're requesting for parks?
Yeah, right now, we use the, the utilities and road department lot, which is way down. Can't think of the road now, right now, off the top of my head, way out there, which, what's it, Josh?
At the end of Lakes Boulevard?
Yeah, Lakes Boulevard, so they have a, they have quite a bit of travel distance every day to go get, pick up the equipment and all that. So, we thought it'd be easier if we could maybe use those lots up next to the courthouse that we own. The, next to the Bluestone building and put something closer.
Tagging on to what Commissioner Hockaday said, why don't we just build a, you know, a twelve by twelve shed or a or have a twelve by twelve shed, wooden shed or larger built at one of the parks, say, I mean, even in River Park. There is room that could be made to put a, not at River Park, but at Patriot Park. Where you could put a storage facility that, you know, there's going to be eyes on frequently, it can be alarmed, I mean, and it's more centrally located. But a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that is just, that's gut wrenching.
We're, we're talking about two different buildings here.
Yeah, if I could, Madam Chair, this is a five hundred thousand dollar metal building in parks. I was just giving an example of what a twelve by twelve building at the justice complex would be, which is not included in the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the metal building here is like a forty by forty building.
And the reason.
And it's not, go ahead, Josh.
Another reason we didn't consider this is because that, the proposed location was in a historic district and we can't just put up a metal building in the historic district. So.
Good catch.
Number of issues there, so it's not in the recommended budget, again, if the board wants to have further discussion on this and we can do that. I'll move on unless the board wants further discussion on this one.
Any other comments?
Okay, so then we move on to the Dayton Valley Events Center well engineering, and this is a little more inclusive than just engineering. So, this is a request to replace the well pump, to do research on water rights, which we do not own on that well. It is owned by a four-H club that has not been in existence for probably decades. And we don't even know if we can get the water rights figured out. And so, with that being said, I didn't feel like it was reasonable to ask the board to put this in the budget at this point. Just because of those issues, we don't own the property, it's on, there are a number of challenges with this particular project. And so, even though it was requested and we would definitely love to have a facility that has its own pumped water up there. Instead of having to tell people to bring their own water, take Santa hats up there and those type of things, that was the thought process on this.
Yeah, just, just a comment if I may, I'm, I, I agree with not funding this, I'm, I'm not in favor of spending any money on Dayton Valley Events Center until we own it.
And, Madam Chair, if you would like me to move on or if you want further discussion, let me know.
Any other discussion on that item from anyone? Okay, not hearing any, Josh, go ahead.
Thank you, so we'll move on to the parks and rec, we, the next line item is a replacement vehicle for the parks. And then we'll move on to park construction tax. And what we do is we take the amount that we think we're going to have sitting in the fund at June thirtieth, plus all the revenues for next year. And we budget all of it, that way it allows the board, art tax board and this board to approve large projects that maybe still in the works. And we just don't know at this time what those are going to entail. And so, we just budget all of it, we may not spend it, the cash stays there, if you don't spend it, we budget similarly in ensuing years. Then we'll move on to facility, court facility assessments, approximately seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars there. And that is a fee that the, or a fine that the justice courts levy on the cases that come to them, in certain cases by state law. And it has to be used for court facilities. It's under the control of the board accounting commissioners, but the board cannot deny a reasonable request. Significant portion of this can be used towards funding the new government complex in Dayton for that court. We have done that when we originally built firmly justice court, we did that when we built the Walker River Justice Court. And so Dayton is ready for their turn. So they, they've had those discussions on that already. We moved down to the roads.
Mr. Foley, I have a question.
Yes.
Just clarification. Like on the court facility assessments, the park construction tax. So when, when we say total request, we have the total amount there, if I heard you correctly, and I just wanted to clarify. That doesn't mean that we've allocated all of that money, it just means that we're requesting it for that fund.
That is correct.
Okay.
That allows you to spend it throughout the year as projects come up without having to have them completely fleshed out by this point to the budget year, a year and a half before it could all be spent.
Or without having to do an augmentation.
Or without having to do an augmentation, well, and technically you cannot do an augmentation unless you have unexpected revenue. So, we, let's just say we budgeted for five hundred thousand dollars for projects of park construction tax. And we're putting in lights at a baseball field or scoreboards or whatever the case may be. With inflation, it came out to six hundred thousand dollars, well, I'm sorry, now you have to wait under state law until the next year, so we can build it in the budget the next year. Okay.
Anyways, thank you, Mr. Foley, I, like I said, I wanted it as a clarification. Because we always get those phone calls after the meeting going, well, you spent all this money and that money, no, that's not what we did, so.
Thank you, and same holds true on RTC fund as well, we use that same philosophy with that money. So that we can go through those projects and we, we don't have to stop a project midstream because we were off by two thousand dollars on the budget or ten or fifty, whatever it is. Let's move on down then to roads, a hundred and sixty-five thousand or a hundred and forty-five thousand for replacement vehicles. Move down to human slash senior services, and this is thirty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars. And this is actually just grant match, Shayla has done a phenomenal job over the years of getting NDOT and other grant sources to fund. So this is a small piece of what two ADA compliant mini vans would be for their transportation program.
In reading the budget, it seemed like it was a fifty percent match, so she got basically these vehicles for half price, is that correct?
These ones are actually significantly more expensive than that, I think, and so I think we're, we're paying. I'd have to look at what the vehicles were, it seems like the vehicles are around sixty, sixty-five thousand pieces, we're paying about fifteen to eighteen thousand.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Great job, Shayla and her crew.
Yep. We are lucky to have the people we have, I would say that over and over. So then we'll move on to Mason Valley Mosquito District, they've requested a replacement truck, they haven't had a new one in many years. They put a number of miles on that. And then we'll move on to some of the requests in the capital improvement fund. And we have two point three million dollars there that I recommend we don't allocate until we get it. And that would be money that by congressional act would get, and if they don't do a congressional act, we don't get. So, some years we have not received it in the fiscal year that we thought we would want to. So, in this particular case, this is two point three million dollars that we are budgeting to receive in June of two thousand twenty-three. At the end of the fiscal year, so I'm like, don't spend the money before you have it. Because by the time you get it, the year's over and you can't spend it anyways. So, let's wait till it comes in and we'll budget for it and then sue it budget as a project. So I just put that to the side there, so they know it's there, but we try not to spend it if we aren't going to have the money to spend until the end. One year we got it in September afterwards, and so it's like, shoot, if we would have tried to spend that previous year, we would have been a whole year off. And then we have the Dayton Government Complex, we have approximately fifteen million dollars, a little bit over fifteen million dollars there towards that project. As of today, right now, we have ten million dollars in cash. So that includes the pills that we anticipate getting in a couple of months in June. Yeah, two months, towards the middle of June. And a transfer from the general fund of two point eight million, that if our revenue significantly changed over the next year, we may not be able to make that transfer through this fund. So, we have a couple of options on this going forward. I would say that we push forward on both this project and the next one, which is the justice complex, district court project. Push forward on those and get them all designed and ready to bid, and then see what's happening. If the economy has slowed down, you may get hungry contractors out there saying, hey, I will do it for less. If it hasn't slowed down, we have two options, we wait till we build up the cash before we bid it. Or, we go out, do some tor, some sort of bonding for the remaining portion of this project. So, I prefer not to bond because I don't like to pay interest. Those who understand it, interest earn it, and those who don't pay it, I prefer to be on the first. If we have the choice for the county, because if we had bonded for the justice complex, we would not have half of what we do down there for the, for the sheriff and all of that. We would still be making payments on it right now, half of that would have been interest over that time. So, just so everyone's aware, we are not as rich of accountable, we can afford to do a bond for this and that all of the time. It's easier for us to save up, we get a third more projects of the timeframe done by not bonding it as we go. And then we'll move on to the public safety complex, this is out of the course and sales tax that we have dedicated to that. It's, we should have through the end of the next fiscal year, not this one, but next, approximately eight point one three two million. Saved up for that, again, the project's probably going to cost about ten million. We might be able to push this forward if we, for short term, rob Peter, pay Paul and use some of the cash we have saved up for the Dayton Government Complex towards this until the public safety sales tax catches up. The challenge with that project is that public safety sales tax may not come in as high as we're anticipating if the economy slows down or we go under recession. So, it may extend that timeframe, just so everyone's aware. We have approximately five point four million dollars in cash as of today, saved up towards that bucket, to give you an idea of where we're at on that. And then Silver Springs Airport improvements, our lease agreement requires us with the Silver Springs Airport, they pay us an annual lease of a little over sixty-six hundred dollars. Well, it's a little bit more than that, they pay us an annual lease and based on rentals there. And we agree in the lease terms under our FAA grant provisions and the lease terms of them to set it aside for capital improvement, matches for that they grants there. And so that's what that money is. So those are all of the capital outlays, I'll touch on quickly as we go through some of the different funds or departments and funds. But, that's a high level overview of every capital outlay outside of utilities, any questions?
Yeah, real quickly, anybody, before Josh moves on? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Foley, you're doing a good job.
Okay, thank you. So with that being said, you can see, other than our day-to-day operations where we need to make some repairs to replacements on items. Our two main projects for this upcoming year, probably for the next three to four upcoming years are going to be that Dayton Government Complex and the district court. We are saving up as much as we can towards those projects to get those done because of the statutory requirements we have at the Dayton Justice Court for jury trials that we're doing a Band-Aid approach on at the moment, so we can get proper facilities. And then the, the upstairs of the justice complex, we've been waiting for a long time to get that moving forward and wanting to get that project where it needs to be. So, I will move on to the next tab, requested positions on page eleven. Here's the good news in the future. For the departments, though, we were able to, we funded, with the funding we had, we were making a recommendation to the board. For the departments though, uh, we were able to, we funded uh with the funding we had, we were making recommendation to the board. We had recommend or requests for eleven point six, seven, five FTE positions. I'm going to go through these one by one and let you know what the funding is, the discussions we had with the department heads and why we recommended what we recommended with. With the funding. So in the district court, what they're requesting is an increase of point six, five to court clerk. One position. So. This is a little more intricate than that. They have had for the past probably four years a temporary. Position. It's a full-time position, but they wanted someone to that they could hire that would go through every. Court document that they had and scan it into their case management system. And then they destroyed the hard copies of those files. They have a room that's about. Half the size of the commissioner chambers. It was nothing but file storage. They have gone through almost all of that. They anticipate that project to be done. By June thirtieth of this year and we will. We will go ahead and. Remove that position off. They also had a part-time position, point three, five FTE, full-time local employees. That retired. That was a senior district work clerk. And so they are going, they're recommending we eliminate both of those positions and replace of those. Put this position in, which is court clerk one. So it's shown as an upgrade to a position, but really you're losing. One point three, five FTE and getting one back. And that was the thought process. The person who retired is a court clerk that was providing juvenile services for the district court. And they still need those services provided by a full-time person accounts for the increased case level. Then we'll move on to judicial master. The two. The two district court judges are. Very, very busy with what they do. They currently have a master paid for by the state and the district court judges' salaries are paid by the state as well. But they have a master that does child support hearings only. And so what they're requesting is that we hire a person, which the state will help fund part of this position. That will take care of those child support hearings. They will take care of custody hearings, four thirty-two B cases, which. I hear the term, I know refers to statute. If you're interested to go to statute, figure out what it is. I just know they want them to do those cases and some other cases as well. And so their recommendation is that we uh do this. They've been asking this for a number of years and they said, we're finally to the point that we. We really feel like it's necessary for the district court with the case load to do this. And so that is built into the recommended budget. The position would travel one day a week to Fernley. And the next week they would take the day, go to Dayton. The next week they would be at Urington. Uh, for the juvenile cases. The rest of the time they'd be here for child support areas and four thirty-two B cases. And the other cases that the judges assigned to them as well. Just so you're aware of what that workload is. Dispatch uh requested an upgrade. To an existing position to become a supervisor position. We currently have two supervisor positions in dispatch. Have had two supervisor positions since I've been here and they currently don't have one of those filled. It's a vacant position. So our discussion with the sheriff and um. And that office was, you know what, would function fine with that. We could rotate those supervisors around so that during the day when the dispatch or the. Communications manager is there, she could function in that capacity if needed. But it's no change from existing operations not to fund this. We have some higher needs. When we went through those requests with the sheriff, we're like, you tell us with the money we have, which positions you would request to be funded first. And so this was not one of the first positions. We went through and funded the first position. In order of the positions that you requested to be funded in the order that you requested. So we just didn't have the money to get to this one. And they've been functioning without um and. I don't think that is a significant position at this point. So we'll move on down to the sheriff's uh budget. He had requested two patrol deputies. Uh, we did not fund those in the recommended budget. He requested a sergeant. Again, on the sheriff's budget, he can assign those sergeants wherever he wants to. We can put them into patrol. He can put them into investigations. He can put them into whatever assignment he wants. The board just prefers a position. So he read, requested a sergeant. That is built into the recommended budget along with one of those nine vehicles is a new vehicle for this position. He requested an additional office assistant. Which is included in the recommended budget. When you add. Additional positions for the sheriff's department or sheriff's office on the street. Someone has to take care of the paperwork on the back end. We have added a number of positions over the past three years for the sheriff's office. But no support staff and we're just at that threshold where that's a significant priority as well. So that's included in the recommended budget. We move on to the jail and he had requested a jail sergeant. My understanding is this will provide twenty-four, seven supervision in the facility there. Uh, he likes to call it the hotel. So we'll go with that. And that is including the recommended budget as well. We'll move on to the library manager uh position. The library requested a library manager. Be created out of a library assistant position in Smith Valley. We evaluated that position with the library director, which took the duties. That position is working out of class or potentially could be. And so our recommendation to the board is we make this library manager position because to. Properly staff that branch, you need someone that is doing the duties of the library manager. And so that is included in the recommended budget. They did request an increase in hours of point one, five FTE to that position. We didn't include that funding in the budget at this point. Then we move on to the senior parks maintenance worker. That was requested by Parks and Budget to hopefully decrease some contracted costs for it forward, but it was going to cost more than what those contracted costs were. And at this point, just trying to allocate the dollars to the highest need positions. That didn't get funded in the recommended budget this year. We did increase a couple of months ago. As a position there, hopefully we'll come back in a year and have a really good idea on. What our cost savings would be, what capacity we have to reduce other contracts. And then on senior services side in silver and gold fund, we had a number of positions. Uh, a transportation specialist position combining two into one in Fernley. You've already approved that at your last board meeting, combining it two into one, but this would also take it up to a full-time position. We are having significant challenge filling our transportation positions, filling our food service specialist positions. And the workload has been going up on those as well. So she requested ten hours a week more on all of these positions. In the budget uh that is included in the recommended budget. We're hopeful we'll have an easier time filling these positions with more hours assigned to them. So they'll make it more attractive in today's labor market for them to be able to come on board. We may be back to the board at some point saying it's not enough, but we'll we'll have those discussions as we go. And then in the utility side. They requested a construction repair tech one. Uh, that would be split between the water and sewer fund. That was not included in the recommended budget for funding purposes, just like the general fund. We're trying to figure out what positions to fund with the money that we have and keep those funds still financially feasible. Uh, his recommendation was of the three positions because there are two wastewater checks. He needed those two wastewater checks. We have added thousands of connections over the past few years with no additional staff. You can't operate a sewer plant long-term in that type of situation. We need to have someone there doing the normal, normal repairs and maintenance. So we aren't tripping over a dollar to pick up a dime. Because if we let them go too far, you're spending millions of dollars now and costs earlier than you want to. So we did build two wastewater tech positions along with vehicles associated with those into the budget for the utilities. Those are all the new position requests. Do we have any discussion on that that you would like to have, Madam Chair?
Uh, any discussion from the board? Uh, seeing none and I oh, I think we've lost Kenny somewhere along the line. I think he must have got to his destination.
Oh, I'm here. I'm here.
Oh, no, you are there. Okay. I didn't see you on the my board anymore.
Yeah, I don't know what happened, but my whole system shut down and I had to reboot it.
Oh, okay. So again, uh, any questions or comments for Mr. Foley before we move on? Okay, well, there you go, Josh.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next tab, General Fund, page twelve. By the way, I hope the board likes the new presentation on these graphs because the graphs and the tables. On each summary page is new this year. Uh, we had some summary information previously, but this shows you the revenues in blue and the. Expenditures and we're and transfers in red for you. Um, just a a quick synopsis of the general fund. We already talked about the tax rate being moved. We talked about the utility license fees. We talked about salaries. We have already talked about the position. So that's everything on the summary page, but just to to give you a little bit more information. We are budgeting for the fund balance to decrease four million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars next fiscal year. Now of that, if you take out the. The one-time transfer of two point eight million to the capital improvements fund to help towards that Dayton Government Center out of fund balance. And the contingency, we are actually spending one point five, five, three, one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. More than we're bringing in revenues. You take out contingency and just say, what is it's without contingency, we're spending about two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars more than we're bringing in. Now, we have vacancies during the year. And so we do have savings from those turnover where a person retires or leaves and a new person comes of entry level. So we should be fine budging to spend more than we're bringing in. And we do have the contingency of three percent, which is currently set at the maximum allowed by statute. Can't put any more in contingency than three percent. We can let it increase fund balance. We can increase transfers. We can increase other things, but um we don't do that. We also have a philosophy, which is recommended by Government Finance Officers Association. Why do they recommend it? Because it's really good sense. And that is, we take a look at our ongoing revenues and our ongoing costs and naturally we'll see where we're at. And then we have one-time expenditures and we use those out of one-time revenues. Fund balance that ended up being higher than we thought it would be when we start the year and those type of things. And so as an example. The camera system and microphone system that we discussed for the commissioner chambers would have been out of one-time money. And so from fund down, so we can allow that to flow into fund balance or we can move it into the transfer to the. Uh, capital improvements fund, or we can allocate it towards another one-time project, whatever the board chooses. But we want to try and keep those, I keep them separate in my mind and try and explain those separately as we go through those. The vehicles are ongoing. We're going to be paying for vehicles every year at this point. The HVACs units are quasi, they're one-time big projects. But you're probably going to see some projects like that almost every year. So I I kind of play with those back and forth and try and classify those as one-time. One, it's community for me and not the other times. So just so the board knows. Uh, let's see. So. Revenues in the general fund over the current year, we're estimating them to go up approximately seven point three percent if you exclude grants. As we talked about earlier, ending fund balance will be budgeted at eleven point six percent. Our our target is sixteen point six percent. Again, we don't always spend everything that we. We budget and so we should come in right around that target frame. Without what's going to actually happen with the economy. We'll not, we'll figure that out and play with that right here as we go. The transfer to the to the uh capital improvements fund of two point eight million dollars, which is the amount of fund balance that we have sitting there. Um, that's available to be transferred over and above with the the eleven points, six, seven percent. Or sixteen point six, seven percent. And you're saying why that amount? It's two months worth of revenue. Our consolidated tax is always two months behind. And so we like the fund balance to be there because fund balance is not cash. If I were at June thirtieth. And my fund balance was zero. I would be negative cash by about. Seven million dollars, which I'm not allowed to do. And here's the way fund balance works. If Jeff Page owes me. Eight million dollars consolidated tax that are going to be collected in July and August, I include those in my fund balance. Do I have the cash? No. I'm not going to have the cash until July and August. But if I spend down to zero fund balance, which a board did around twenty-five years ago. And the state came in and took over our finances for a little while because the commissioners. Were not grasping the difference between fund balance and actual cash. So when we take a look at this, you have to have a fund balance there as we're booking in money that. It, we haven't received yet. So two months worth gives you the ability, half of your revenue comes from consolidated tax. It allows you to get that money in um and have cash to. So we try and learn from our mistakes in the past as much as possible. Okay, so we'll move on at this point then. Let's move on to tab. Tab two, which is on page twenty-six. We're going to go to the commissioners. Two things of notice on this one. And one we've already discussed, one was the microphone system. We're going to be removing that out of the capital outward request. The other one is there is um. Agenda software, new agenda software built into this in upcoming year. It's going to be approximately twenty thousand dollars for. The purchase of the software and implementation and then ten thousand dollars a year in ongoing licenses. We're currently paying a little over five thousand a year for our existing software ongoing license costs. So that is.
What tab did we jump to? Sorry.
To tab two, which would be page twenty-six. And this is where it starts to speed up because we've talked about ninety-five percent of what we're going to talk about and I'm just going to hit some highlights. Some of the departments and then answer questions. Um, so that is recommended and built into the budget for this next year. Did you have any questions or discussion on that?
Well, and.
On the agenda software.
No.
Okay. On this, okay, so then we'll move on. Uh, let's see, let's move on to page forty-eight, which would be tabs.
Well, 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 before we do that.
Got some questions.
I I just have a comment on on this tab. Yeah, we have um ten thousand dollars budgeted for travel. Yeah, but you know, I understand and I I'm just concerned. I wonder if that's enough. I mean, there are three national NACO events a year that hopefully we will have participation on. Plus, there is the Nevada NACO event. I know that we funded a couple of things this year out of contingency. And I just wonder if we might want to bump that up so we're not having to to move money for from contingency to to cover travel. That that we can anticipate. And since we're not spending sixty-six thousand dollars on uh cameras and microphones, I like to see us put about. I don't know, maybe five more thousand in that, but that's just my thought.
Okay, and just so the board is aware, Commissioner Henderson. Discuss that that budget covers the Nevada NACO Conference to send the commissioners and Mr. Page to that. It does any travel that the commissioners do for the, under the travel policy for the commissioners and. What the county manager does as well for for that. So and any that Aaron may do as well. So that's what the budget is built around. It doesn't contemplate, as Commissioner Henderson pointed out, doesn't contemplate any national conferences. So or additional of what I did. So if you want additional planning in the budget, now is the best time to have that discussion.
Madam Chair, if if the board wishes to add more funding to travel for the NACO conferences. Then you better add about thirty thousand dollars instead of five thousand dollars, depending on how many commissioners you're going to send. There are three major national events that the board may be interested, the National Conference and then the Western Region Conference. And then the Public Lands Conference. And as an example, one, I believe the Western Region right now is in Anchorage, Alaska. Um, so flights are expensive to go. I'm depending on how many commissioners you're going to send. You may want to increase that from five thousand to substantially more amount of money. My recommendation is um if we're if we're cutting dollars to save money, maybe we hold back and only send one commissioner to National NACO. Um, versus trying to send two or three commissioners to each National NACO event.
I absolutely agree with that. I mean, in years past, um, you know, we usually only sent one commissioner, if anybody. To those types of events. Um, I do know, we, you know, that last time around, the Washington trip, we were going to send three. That got canceled um by the individuals and I thank you very much for doing that. Um. But yeah, I if if we're going to send anybody, I mean, we'd only should only cut expense for one. Uh, moving forward, that's my thought. Um, Commissioner Gray, you have your hand up?
I do. I agree. These are, these are nice to haves, not necessities. And yeah, I would not recommend upping that at all, especially when we have Commissioner Hawke Day, who still has flight travel credit that can be used, you know, should we decide to send him to national or something?
Okay, any of the commissioners and chambers have comment?
Commissioner Hawke here. Yeah. I don't like to ever, you know, overspend, but travel has just about doubled from the last six months. So I do have to agree that we may be a little short on that even for one person going to each conference. Just something to consider. They have said, I think it was two nights ago on the news, that it's like 50% more to travel. So it could be tough making that budget.
Commissioner Jacobson, I wasn't sure if you had any comment.
I'm a conservative by nature and I'm all for just sending one to conferences and I will gladly vote for any of you four to go to the conferences. Thank you.
Well, and I wanted to point out something as well, even if we only budget for one, that doesn't exclude others. If they want to go attend on their own dime, they can still be there. You know, I, I do a lot of things on my own dime and don't send in requests to the county for reimbursement. So I, yeah, I would like to stick with one and go from there. So, so Josh, the way you have this budgeted, do we need to still add money to cover just the one?
If the cost to go through a national, about $2,000 for a commissioner, I would say we would want to add approximately $6,000 for three events if you're going to send one to each one of those three events.
Okay.
So I would suggest, because it's, it's not, it's not $2,000. When we were looking at sending three commissioners to DC for the National Legislative Conference, it was about three grand per commissioner to go. So I would suggest that we take a look at adding an additional $10,000 to that budget. If we don't spend it, then it go, we're, we're okay. We can use, utilize for other things or kept as savings for the next fiscal year.
I would agree with that. Again, my other commissioners, any comments?
Yeah, just, I, you know, very, I'm a very conservative guy again when it comes to finances. We do have some travel money, like I said, left from Commissioner Hawke days. I would say we just hold it back and just, you know, if we, I don't think we have to send anybody to national or any of the other ones are nice to have. But you know, I would just say we sit on this budget for now and you know, we plan on sending people to our state conference that we do each year and just hold back. And then, you know, if we look at it later on, there's a real compelling reason to send one or more people. We look at it then.
I disagree with that. I think attendance at national events is very important and something that, that we should participate in.
Not disagreeing, but it's, you know, when we're tightening our belts and the cost is skyrocketing, you know, it's, I, you know, there are other ways we can attend. Each of the NACO events lately have been available by Zoom, which is a, it's not a perfect answer, but it's an answer.
So Madam Chair, if I may, so the rec, it, to send one to these conferences, it's recommended increase 10,000. If we don't spend it, we can reallocate that. Is that correct? But if we don't allocate it, we can't spend it. Well, then I think the recommendation to attend these, I would say we move the 10 grand over and, and and if we don't use it, we don't use it. But I do agree that having, having representation at these conferences is, is valuable. It definitely adds value. So.
Okay, Josh, so I, I'm hearing that, let's put an earmark there for the 10,000 extra and we'll add that to the end of this meeting.
Okay, thank you. I have made that note, so I don't have to wait and, and write that down. We'll just keep moving forward. Let's move on to page 48, which would be tab six in the commissioners binders. This is the facilities department. I just wanted to highlight that part of the requests and special projects, there's $40,000 to demolish the blue building next to the Mackintosh Building in Silver Springs. It's been deemed unsafe. It's old masonry structure there. We've been wanting to remove that and create a parking lot for the sheriff's office at that location for many years. And so it's in the recommended budget for this. Again, this would be an example of one of those one-time expenditures that we have that come up.
I don't know. Can we tear it down? I thought it was historic. Joking.
Okay. And then at Silver Springs, juvenile probation, they've requested a fence to be put up around part of that property as well. That's approximately just under $20,000 to do that. They end up with with homeless people sleeping around the building at times and it's a, a staff and public concern in that location. So that's built in. We're looking at doing some re-carpeting. Again, those aren't capital projects, but just so you know, they're in that budget. And then we already discussed the HVAC discussions for the capital and every place to be. If there are no questions there, let's move on to tab 65 or tab 5 through 65.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I ask that we go to page 56?
56 would be the salaries budget.
Actually, my question, I just looked at it closer. My question got answered by me. I'm good.
That is good.
Okay. So without being the case, we'll move on to tab nine.
Nine. Okay. Yeah, I didn't hear you clear the first time.
It's at five.
Have nine on page 65. And just so you know, there's an increase to the software program line item for software of almost $24,000. This is to purchase additional security software that if in the case there is a breach of our defenses, it will go in and will shut down the computer as soon as it identifies that that computer has been infected. It's a, with the things that are going on in the world today, there are significantly increased security risks and threats on IT side. And we feel like this is something that we responsibly should bring up with that type of activity, especially governments being targeted. We have a number of security systems in place. I'm not going to go through all of them. This will put an additional one in to to provide that additional security, well-paid for, even if we prevent a single event happen. So we'll move on to tab 13 on page 84. So this is the district attorney's budget. I want to let you know, we've had significant discussion in a previous board meeting about how we conduct salary studies and adjust salaries as we go up. We have a district attorney position that has been vacant for, the deputy district attorney position has been vacant for many months now. We are seeing that they are under in the market significantly. And so we're recommending in the recommended budget to adjust those salary ranges for the, those positions. So the L1, there are four pay ranges, L1, which is law clerk, which is actually in the district court budget, but to increase that by 7% of that range. And then L2 is a deputy DA. When you start out in the DA, that would increase it by 8%. That salary range, L3 is 6% for the senior deputy DA, that would be the increase. And then L4 for the chief deputy DA would be 3%. So that's built into this budget. We also built in a stipend of approximately $300 per month for each DA. That is intended to cover going to covering the weekends on the 48-hour bail hearings. And when we're looking at our competitor counties for this talent, they're doing that amount or more. And so we're just trying to keep these positions so that we can have people in seats for district attorneys. That's a good question.
No, just, just, just a comment, if I may. And I, I think I know the answer to this. I'm going to ask it anyway. Are we keeping track of what the going to the 48-hour bail hearings is costing us? Yeah. In other words, yeah, added expenses here, added expenses. Are we, are we keeping track of that?
Yes.
Because at some point that may be information that could be used for a BDR to try to get some kind of relief from. I don't think requirement is going to go away, but maybe we can get some additional funding from the state to help pay for that since they're requiring it. So I, I was, I was, I figured you were keeping track of it, but I just wanted to make sure that we were.
And just so you know, there's also an increase of approximately $5,000 in overtime for this budget for the administrative staff as needed to work weekends because they don't, they don't, they're not salaried. And so we're not doing a stipend, but they do get overtime to be there. We also did approximately $5,000 each one of the justice courts and increase in overtime for this.
And also didn't we talk about the $555,000 to get extra people for next year because of that bail reform?
So we have that.
Taken care of.
We're keeping track of that as well. Yes. And the additional in the public guardian or the public defender's budget. Yes, we, we have that. So let's move on to and I'm going to skip over anything we've already talked about previously. Let's move to tab 19, page 116. And this is the Lock River Justice Court. And I'm not going to hit each one of the justice courts, but I wanted to emphasize that we have an increase for 4% for the justice fee salary for that. We also have the increase in overtime. We have separated out the judge pro temp costs that they're doing, and that is going to increase as part of 48-hour barrel hearings as well. Because what we're, what we're doing is we're negotiating contract that will come back to the board accounting commissioners to provide an additional person so that instead of three JP's rotating every third weekend, we toss another contracted position in the mix. So that they, once a month, we'll have to do that. And they can work that. So I just wanted to note that out. That's the same for each of three justices. Let's move on to tab 22. That's here, you stepped out. So I'll just do it by, by ear for everyone else. This is the juvenile probation department. They're requesting security cameras out of their office supplies budget of approximately $20,000 to put in a security camera system in three of their locations. That would be in Dayton, Silver Springs and Yurington. They already have one in Fern, a system that's up there. And so that would have cameras and recording if they have any issues that happen on that site. We have that ability. We have over here for camera systems as we've reported each budget to do that. And this is their request and it is included in the funded budget. So we'll move on to tab 23, page 139. This is the public defender budget. This has gone up approximately 55% in this current year and another 14% in upcoming fiscal year. The reason for the increase is the requirements that we have from DIDs, Department of Indigent Defense Services of the state, now that they're in charge of that. So we have significantly increased costs in, in defense for indigent individuals. And that's what this captures is the indigent cost. And anything by state law that's over $883,183 is eligible for reimbursement from the state, provided they have the funding for it. So we have built into the budget that we're going to be reimbursed, the difference between the 1.317 million and the 183,000. So that's shown on the revenue side as well. There may, this is also where we're going to be tracking the murder costs for the indigent side, assuming it ends up being indigent cost. And it will be in this budget as well, which we've already discussed and are bringing back the contract or doing a contract for, we have to have someone who's certified in capital cases to be on that case. So we, we're paying an attorney for that as well, an additional public defender contract. So this has gone up significantly. There is a chance that the state will change the law and say, we're not, you know, this is a county responsibility when things get tight. We hope that doesn't occur. We're not wanting to sell that to the legislature that it occur. But we keep an eye on this as we go forward, just to be aware. The public defender contract is requested to go up $150,000 for our contract public defender. That's to increase staffing again for the 48-hour bail hearings to provide, it doesn't even cover fully the term. But he's going to add an attorney administrative person with, use some of that funding towards that, is our understanding. So they can cover the, the weekends. Let's move on.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
We've got more than one request. I, I should have grabbed you before you got to that last one for a break.
Okay.
So if I don't know, they want five minutes or whatever. So take a short break here.
Sounds good.
Jeff, let me know when everybody's back. Okay. Yeah, you had me muted. I yelled at you, but you didn't answer. Anyways, if we could please take note that Commissioner Gray has dropped off the Zoom. So we're left with the remaining four commissioners. So Mr. Foley.
Okay, that's chair. Foley line can we complete the record? If we can go to. Tab 25, which will be page 146. This is the animal control department. There is a request that's included in the recommended budget for $34,860. To equip the surgery room, the shelter to help keep the cost down for space muters for the public and the facility as well. So let's move on to tab 26, page 152. This is sheriff's department budget. I wanted to highlight that the special investigations is requesting new interview systems, cameras, microphones, recording. Equipment for the four substations, approximately $78,000. To do that, they would end up with a uniform. Sister or interface. So depending on which sub they go to operates the same no matter what. And the systems that we do have are antiquated and the cameras are. Out of production, you can't even get them anymore. So it is time. Then let's move on to. Tab 30, which is on page 180. This is the cemetery. Budgets. And it does include a request for new software. It also has, which was funded, it also has a request for engineering. For approximately seven, $8,000 or so for the Silver City Cemetery, which was not included in the recommended budget. So. Just so the board gets the background on this. And again, this is one that you may want discussion on. The Silver City Cemetery is almost completely full. A few years back. We had decided as board accounting commissioners to purchase a lot adjacent to it. So that we could expand that cemetery. The thought process at the time was we're going to buy that. We're working with the Comstock mine up there and they're going to come in and provide fill from that mine. To bring that up to grade because right now it is very rocky. It is not suitable for a cemetery. You actually have to add. At least six feet of fill so that you can get down six feet to utilize that as a graveyard site. And so with that being said. The discussions with the mine over the years have changed and. They're no longer offering to bring fill for various reasons to that property. It would cost. I'm guessing a few hundred thousand dollars to just bring fill into that. There's no requirement under state statute to. Uh, expand the cemeteries. We do have cemeteries in Dayton. There are cemeteries and. And surrounding communities that that can be used. And it's up to the board if they want to discuss this, but for the recommended budget, it was not included in the recommended budget for those reasons.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. This is. Okay, so the, the county purchased a slot with the intent of expanding the cemetery. Uh, but lots not suitable for cemetery use without a lot of expense. So I, I mean, I understand that the problem that the people in Silver City have and I empathize with that. I wouldn't mind seeing us go ahead and fund the engineering. For that, or as an alternative, maybe include some money to look for an alternative location in Silver City for a cemetery. I mean, I realize that we have, there's no requirement, but people live in Silver City. They don't want to be buried Dayton, you know, or anywhere else. I, I know there's an ARPA request for this, so. I, I think at, at this point. I'm willing to go with the recommendations as to not fund it out of this. But just want to get on record that should the offer funding not be used or. Then we may want to come back and, and look at doing something. We might have to do something for the people in Silver City, you know, we really do. I don't know what we're going to do with that lot. If we're not going to use it for that, if it's got any cash value or not, but. We do need to do something as a board for, to, to look at the cemetery situation in Silver City. But like, like I said, for, for the budget, I'm going to go with your recommendation.
Any other commissioner comments? And Josh, at this time, yeah, I'm going to agree that. Yeah, we don't need to spend that kind of money for that lot. So I'm going to go with your recommendation that we don't fund that at this time.
Thank you. Well, with that, we'll move on then to tab 34, page 189. This is the library budget. We already discussed about the library manager position. The, there was another request. We are at another one of those lovely junction points where Windows is saying. Uh, you're going to have to upgrade and the other older versions are not going to be supported anymore. And so you have to upgrade to Windows 11. Well, none of the patron computers. Are capable of running Windows 11. So the request in the budget was for approximately. Almost $40,000 to purchase all of those patron computers. The good news is we have approximately three years before we have to move to the Windows 11. Platform and discontinue using the old ones. So with that, we discussed with the library director. Would you be agreeable for us in the recommended budget to just recommend a third of those computers this year? A third in the next year and a third in the year after. That way we don't have a whole group of computers needing to be replaced. At once in the future as well. It kind of phases them then over time. And we don't have the cost all at once and you get better computers all the time as you go to. Cause they progress. And so she was agreeable to that. So the recommended budget does include just one third of that initial request.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. I'm curious. I had this written down earlier and I, and I neglected to ask, but I would like to. The librarian position at Smith Valley, we're increasing that. Is that correct?
We're not increasing the number of hours. What we are doing is changing it from a library assistant position to a library manager position. And that is included in the recommended budget, but this wasn't one of the positions where we increased hours and.
So it's basically a pay raise and a title.
Pay raise and the title. What we're doing is we're paying someone for the job description.
And so the expectations are increased, I guess you could say.
I, yes. Actually, I would say that's.
Priority doing the job or they're doing the job of that. And so we're just catching up. All right. I was just curious if it was based on amount of use and do they track usage in libraries or?
They, oh yes. They do track the usage in the library. She has fantastic statistics that she shares with the board occasionally. But yes, they, they do track that usage. We, again, we want to make sure that we're paying people for the work to perform. So that's the recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions at this time? Okay, Mr. Foley.
Okay, let's skip all the way back to the cooperative extension tab. And this is on page 264. We used to have a full-time employee at the county and then the additional. Staffing was provided at the state level because the state oversees the cooperative extension program statewide. When our employee retired approximately a year ago. The state came to us and said, we would prefer just to have all the employees at the state level in the county just reimburse us with contract services. So that's what we're doing here. They did have a request because previously they'd come in and requested a certain dollar amount. I think it was that we would fund 20% of the 4H. Community base instructor. They're requesting us to fund 80%. It's still within the one cent tax rate that we have to fund. It seems like a good use of the funds and they're running the program. So I just wanted to make note that that request was in here and it's in the recommended budget.
Kind of funny how the state share tends to shrink over time. In a lot of areas.
It does. And then they're, they're also asking. For a match for grant and also for a short-term livestock specialist for $12,711. Be provided at one time funding out of this. There's enough tax rate to cover the plus. So we're, it's in the recommended budget as well. Okay, let's move on to the next tab, the road fund. I want to note. Uh, sorry, 270. So the road fund, I want to note that we've increased the utility license fees. We've talked about this previously by $200,000. We've also changed the salary allocation for mechanic that was split, actually works in Dayton and. Base, instead of making people drive all the way to Yerington that have vehicles in Dayton County vehicles. We have been for many years servicing the Dayton shop, but that mechanic is now doing more and more work on the utility side than on the roadside. And so that. Uh, that particular mechanic, the share has been changed slightly. So you're going to see the full-time equivalent employees decreasing this fund. Just because they're getting less of a share of that person at the time. So I wanted to, to point that out. The other thing is, as we watched this fund, we talked about the gas tax revenues probably are not going to. Be what we projected them to be for the next year because those projections came out in February, you know. March timeframe before we ended up with all of the sanctions and all of the impacts.
And then, then again, of course, there's always to talk about a, a gas tax holiday. To combat the high price of fuel, which would really just be a disaster for us.
It would be very, very challenging. Yes, disastrous in good work. Uh, let's move on to. The human services tab and we'll go to page 288. This is the general indigent fund. This is Human Services Department, all of Shayla's. Uh, other than medical indigent and senior centers, that's what's paid for out of this. They did have a request to, for additional tax rates in this fund. They get levy to tax rate. But there's no recommended additional taxes going into this. They lost a grant and like, we want to keep these people. The good news is, is the marijuana. Revenue that we get from the state that we put into here because there was a new dispensary added this last year. That increased by a few tens of thousands of dollars. So that money was going in here. So instead of increasing tax rate, we just. Said, hey, you already have an increase. And so we're, we think we're good with that. Um, let's move on to in the same tab. Page 302. This is the medical indigent fund. I just wanted to note that 1.7 cents of this tax rate we talked about got moved out of this. So what's left? Is we have eight cents, which is the maximum amount that we have to pay towards the state Medicare match program. The state covers anything over, or cap to eight cents or tax rate of what we have to pay. And then by state law, we have to levy a cent and a half for state indigent accident fund and one cent for the state supplemental fund. So those. We're just a passer. We get the money to send it off to the state on really all three of those, but that's. That's the tax rate that comes in here. The good news as well, the reason we built up a fund balance over the years is because. Some years we do not spend the whole eight cents. And so they only bill us what we actually spend. And so we keep that as fund balance. We can use some of this fund balance. Towards the government center because they're going, we're going to have human services in there. So. We're not quite, we may have another couple hundred, four, 500,000 to use out of this fund towards it. It doesn't get us to millions of dollars we need, but it does help towards it, just like the. Court facility fees can help towards it.
It's just a quick question because I didn't catch that 1.5 cents for the. State indigent accident fund. Do you know what that is?
I'll let, you probably are an expert in this.
It, yeah, it. The, the engine accident fund, this goes into a, a, a fund. And then. When an injured person has an accident, it depends on where the accident is. If the accident happens in Lyon County, Lyon County is responsible. And then when an injured person has an accident, it depends on where the accident is. If the accident happens in Lyon County, Lyon County is responsible for those medical bills. This program is actually. Run by NACO. They, they go overseas this fund on, on a grant from the state, but that, that's, it, it goes to pay for medical expenses for indigent people. That are injured in the state of Nevada. What, no matter where they're from.
And a lot of that funding goes straight to the hospitals. However, in recent years, some of that money has come back to the counties. A hundred thousand was put back in to this fund this, this year through that NACO. And they go, it's changed. On the excess, what we're doing with some of that. So it does come back into this fund.
And, and the rea, the reason that it, it goes through NACO is it provided. The larger urban hospitals with trauma centers, those kinds of things, a single point of contact to deal with in regards to billing. Versus the old days where every county would get a bill and then it would be confused as to whether. You know, you take the I A D issue as an example, if it's at mile marker fifty-three, it's in Lyon County, if it's mile marker fifty-four, it's in Churchill County. It provided a one-stop shop for those medical facilities to get reimbursed quicker than later. So that we can keep them fiscally whole from those types of situations. So that, that, that process has been in place now for. A long time, twenty-plus years that, as far as I know.
Okay, then let's go ahead and move on to the capital improvements tab, which is on page three fifty-three. Again, I wanted to reemphasize the product, the funding that's gonna be coming out of this. We have the approximately fifteen million dollars towards the big government center. A little over eight million dollars for the district court remodel and expansion. I do want everyone to be aware, we used to put a tax rate into this fund and we ceased doing that. That tax rate needed to be shared with the cities. Years ago and, or I should say into the road fund. And that was shared with the cities. We took the tax rate out of that. And we use our utility license fees in the road fund instead, which are generated outside the cities. The cities have their own utility license fees that they collect, they can use towards roads if they wish to. But to make up the difference, out of this fund, we fund the cities for roads every year. Hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the city of Fernley and twenty thousand dollars to the city of Yarrington. Pay to, and quarterly installments each year. So there's two hundred thousand out of this fund that we take out of our payment loop taxes and fund those to the cities. So you're aware. Let's move.
Was the ending fund, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay.
It, it was the ending fund balance? Is that line broken on this chart or is that correct?
So we, this is. It is correct. We are, we budget some of these to spend a hundred percent of the money so we can spend it all during the year. Same as we talked about park construction tax on the capital improvements fund. We budget it so that we can spend it during the years we go, because we're not sure exactly how much is actually gonna go out during the year. We have the projects. So. Yeah, it's nice to have that ending fund balance line to see, even if it's broken. Okay, so let's, let's move on to the utilities tab and page three seventy-four. On Dayton Water Fund. So you have five years of history here. You can see there was a request for three quarters of a new position. Actually, it was a full new position, three quarters here, a quarter out of sewer that wasn't funded for that position and the recommended. And you can see. The requested expenses are more than the revenues for the next and recommended same way for the next fiscal year. So keep in mind, when you hear double-digit inflation numbers out there. We are seeing significantly more than that for some of the things that utilities purchases. Because when they're purchasing pipe, replacement pipes, those type things, if they can even get them. They have gone up much more than just what your CPI is going up out there. And we had some discussion, which is gonna be on a future agenda, is can we forego the rate increases on these funds going forward? The challenge for us is, we've realized the impact that inflation is having on our rate payers. We realize the impact that these rate increases are having. But the reality is, we still have to provide water to them when they turn the tap on. Or sewer when they flush the toilet. And those costs are going up significantly higher than what those inflation costs that we're seeing in the news are. And so when we're looking at these, we have that piece. And in addition to that, we have our bond covenant where we signed a twenty million dollar bond. And these revenues need to cover both this and water and sewer together. We have to have enough of a quote-unquote profit to make those payments. We haven't started making any payments on that yet. We're gonna pay interest only on the sewer side. Until we draw down that full twenty million dollars on those projects, which may be over the next year or two years, depending on. How quickly a D E P turns around on some of those things. But the reason the rates are set the way they are and the, is to cover those bond payments. And that was before we contemplated this type of inflation occurring on our prices. So I just wanted to, to point that out to you. I don't believe we're gonna be able to defer those rate increases. My recommendation to the board is can be not, not necessarily a discussion item for today, but that can be included in the budget discussion as well, so that you're aware. So with that being said. I want to move to page three six, three eighty-four. Which is the water capital improvement fund. This is not including the fleet, their vehicle purchases, those type of purchases. But I wanted to show you the capital projects that are built into this budget, recommended budget for next year. We are looking at approximately eight point five million dollars in capital costs for this next year. Majority of that is a water tank on ten mile. Because we are to the point with Copper Canyon and all the other developments going on, we need additional water storage in that area. Not just copper. They have a lot of different developments that are happening throughout the day. And so that's in there. If you take a look at the next year. We have almost five million dollars. At that point. We run out of cash. And you can see the next year beyond that, seven million. And the year after that's twenty-five million dollars. So the good news is, is we monitor the cash flow very carefully. We only put in the current year the most necessary things. And if we get to a point, I told the utilities director, we're gonna play this year by year. And we're gonna go through year by year and see where we're at. If we get to a point that we have problems, our options are, we. We bond, but you have to have the rates to bond. And so we're gonna take a look at that or we defer some of these projects. Now, if growth doesn't occur, some of these projects don't have to happen as much, but some of them have to. You have to replace some of the lines that are, when they fail of those type of things. So we're just gonna keep an eye on this. What I want you to take away from this discussion is. We're on a razor-thin line with these utility funds as far as being able to take care of the replacement. Things that we need to and the expansion things that we need to as we go along. We are getting connection fees coming in as we go. And so that does help for some of these costs. But we, it's not one of those where we can. Just say, hey, we're fat, doesn't matter. I'm, I'm just at the dumb part, so we're good.
Just, just a, a, a quick question and for curiosity, more than anything else. And i- if you know, how big of a water tank is that?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'm thinking it's a two-million gallon tank.
Excuse me?
I think it's a two-million gallon tank, but Mr. Burketa, if he's listening, can probably help us there.
Commissioner, hi, this is David Burketa, for the record. Yeah, it's just under a one-million gallon storage tank.
It's a lot, lot of money for a big cylinder, basically. But I'm sure there's reasons.
Yeah, they're not cheap.
Oh, I'm sure of that.
No, they're not. Okay, so let's move on to page. Didn't write this one down, I apologize, but we will get there. Let's go to page three eighty-six, the Dayton Sewer Fund. I want to point out that they requested two and a quarter employees. We did recommend funding of two employees. Now, keep in mind, the Dayton Sewer Fund contracts with the Silver, Silver Springs General District. To provide staffing services for that sewer plant in Silver Springs. So currently, we're doing a part of a position allocating by contract services. We, we did a journal entry for the bill between the two of them. And it goes in contract services as an expense on the G I D side. On this side, we show as revenue. Well, that plant. Needs additional people, again, just like we're talking to additional people for, for this, to keep it running properly. So half of one of these new positions is paid for out of. That charge to the Silver Springs J I D. That is built into both budgets, just so you're aware. And. It's not like we send over half an employee over there and, and get done. You may send over two or three employees and, and get it taken care of for a week, come back or those type of things. But that's how we're funding part of one of those employees. And then we are changing allocation slightly between water and sewer based on actual hours worked in the past year on estimates. If we take a look at the graph, you can see the revenues for next year exceed the expenditures by five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. What that does not include on the expense, I should say expense side, is it does, that includes just the interest on the debt that they have. Principal payments are six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars a year. So if you take a look at that, compare revenues to expenditure or expenses, and then you add the principal, which is on the cash flow side, it doesn't even show up in this. We're actually requesting more money than we're bringing in. Now, we don't always spend all of our budget. We can't put contingency in these funds, so we end up budgeting a little more in each of these line items. But when you look at it, it looks like you have a profit of six hundred thousand dollars almost. You really don't. You really have a deficit of about fifty thousand dollars in this one. Just sort of. And again, the exact same discussion we had on the water side as far as. Where we're at funding-wise and being able to defer. But let's go on to page.
Can I ask a question? First, I mean. Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the, the position that we, that you recommend that we not fund, that's split, I guess, three quarters and a quarter. It was a, a maintenance tech?
Yes.
What exactly would that person be doing?
When your water stops flowing and someone has to go out, figure it out, dig up the ground and replace the pipe or the valve or whatever happens to be the water main. That's that person. It's not the person that sits at the, or works at the plant, sits the wrong word, works at the plant, takes care of the treatment equipment. It's actually the person that's out in the field, repair, repairing or doing any maintenance on the stuff out on those, those type of things. Where they're physically replacing items and those type of things in the transmission distribution lines. This particular case, the collection lines as well.
And, and we, obviously, we have people doing that job now. This is a request for an additional person?
Yes, sir.
Okay, could I, I, I wanna, I wanna mull that one over. Something, something, not, not today, but between the, the tentative budget and the final budget, I, I wanna mull that one over a little bit.
And I would love to fund that position as well. My problem is I have a bond covenant I have to keep. And we have to be able to pay for everything that we need to pay for. That Tetris piece didn't fit into the puzzle. It took us over the top and the game was over. Okay, okay, so let's, uh, let's move on to page three ninety-six. Dayton Sewer Fund, these are the capital projects built into, not including the fleet, that's on the next page where they're buying vehicles. But these are the capital projects that are built in. You can see for the next fiscal year, we have almost twenty-one million dollars. And then the year after, we have approximately seventeen million dollars. What that gets you, for the most part, are the three projects you have in pipe. And we have approximately sixteen million dollars more in bonding that we're gonna draw down out of that twenty million. So we are broke. Out of cash about. Two and a half years. Now, we are bringing in revenue each month. We are bringing in. Connection fees currently, although if growth slows down, that slows down. If you look at the year after, you've got almost eleven million dollars in capital requests scheduled for that year. And, and then six million a year after, three million a year after. We'll probably scale these back. We're doing the same approach, but again, same message as the water fund. We are on a knife's edge on these particular funds. And so we are trying to balance out that cash and make sure that we're able to continue to provide those services. With that being said, that's it for the county side. Now we have a special districts. So Madam Chair. We can either, on the county side, you can go through and have your adopt the budget. And then we can go into the special districts or we can go into them and come back and have that discussion. But that's all I have for the county budget itself.
Okay, well, before we move on, now that we've gotten through all the county side. Do I have any commissioners in chambers that had questions on items that Josh didn't bring up?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may, this is Commissioner Jacobson. So, Mr. Foley. It seemed like, was that last meeting? Or we were discussing the contingency fund and how it was getting very thin. You didn't say broke. Okay, that's good, but then. What, what, some things that put us in that situation? Is there something that we've learned from that, that we can maybe try to avoid this year? Or some, something that, that we can do a better job of. As a, as a board of commissioners to help make sure that we don't. Get strapped, so to speak. Cause you, you don't like to come down to the end and, and all of a sudden, something happens and we have no contingency funds left. So is there something there that, that maybe we missed as a board?
So. I would say that we've done a pretty good job. We've been a little more. We've been a little more liberal with departments. And I don't mean that as a bad term, because they're, they're not requesting. Pie in the sky type of things, but we've, we've allowed departments to come in on a regular basis throughout the year. For all sorts of different projects throughout the year, instead of saying, come in a budget time. This is your budget for the next year. Unless there's something really unusual that happens. Don't come talk to us again about additional money until we get to budget time next year. So that's a shift that we've accommodated as, as we've. Become a little more. A little less strapped, if you will. And we may have to go back to that philosophy of, you know what, great idea, fantastic idea, bring it up.
Let's budget next year.
In the budget next year instead of during contingency. Because we have some departments that literally on a weekly basis, I get an email from and say, hey, I need this or I need that. And it's not the budget, how do I do this? Now, sometimes it's stuff, it's like, yeah, we gotta do that. Sometimes it's stuff, it's like, well, if you put in your budget request, it doesn't have to be today. You can get that in July. And so we may have to change to that kind of philosophy as we go, but part of it, we'll just have to play by ear and wait each request.
Roger that. And then I just want to touch on something that Commissioner Henderson mentioned earlier today. And I think is a great idea as far as a B D R regarding. S- some of that unexpected costs and. Increases, et cetera, from the forty-eight hour bail hearing. I think, I think that would be a wonderful idea that other counties would probably get behind as well. And I think that would actually be a B D R that would have a chance. But again, you probably need some historical or some figures and numbers. And you don't want to go in there, you know, saying, well, this aren't anticipated costs as, as opposed to this is the actual. Cost to our county. Thank you for doing that to us. And I might, let me look through my notes, Madam Chair, but I'm gonna, I'm good for right now.
Okay, any other commissioner?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Henderson.
Madam Chair, sorry. So if I'm reading this right, our recommended contingency for next year is one point three million?
And just to clarify that to, to the board, when we talk about contingency, ninety-five percent of the time, we are talking about general fund contingency. We're allowed to put up to, we don't have to do any, but we're allowed to put up to three percent by statute of whatever the expenditures are. ninety five percent of the time we are talking about general fund contingency. We are allowed to put up to, we don't have to do any, but we're allowed to put up to three percent by statute of whatever the expenditures are. Three percent set aside in contingency and just and that's the calculation. We also have contingency in the road fund budget has its own contingency of three percent. The general into gen- the silver and gold fund, those two I added this year. That's new because they haven't had them in the past. I'm like, we really should be doing it for those as well because food prices are going to be going up to the senior centers and some of the other housing prices have continued to go up. And then the cooperative extension also has a contingency as does the fair and road fund, just so you're aware on all of those. So when we talk about contingency, most of the time, almost all of the time, you're dealing with with contingency in the general fund, but occasionally we end up with some of those other budgets.
Okay, so then to clarify my question, the contingency in the general fund is one point three million.
Approximately, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Commissioner Hocke here. What are we looking at though, since we already have an eight percent inflation rate? Do you think we might have some trouble in some of those contingency funds uh, because of that?
So it definitely could get very tight. What what we have done in some cases is when a department or an office has vacancy in their in their budget towards a new position, we may ask them to fill in a position for a time period if we get really tight. We haven't had to do that for many years, but sometimes we'll say, you know what, we know you have this position's vacant. Leave it vacant for a month longer to help us get where we need to on this. Reality right now is we're having a hard time filling a position anyway, so that's happening uh, organically as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, man. Going back to a couple of things, the Mason Valley mosquito control district, one replacement vehicle. I mean, if we need a new vehicle, we we need it. How many days a week does that run?
I would say five. That's actually under a different budget that we will get to. Those those districts, we're still going to go to the budgets. I realize I included capital outline, but we're going to go to the budgets for after we finish.
Okay, yeah, so we'll get to that, but it was brought up earlier.
Yeah, they he uses that on a daily basis and they're going out and they're treating here and there. They're going out and they're checking to see where they're where the hatches are and they're they're all over.
I just wasn't sure if it was used once or twice a week and it's a vehicle we could share with Ma- Mason Ba- or uh, any other areas to to help with that. So you answer my question. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, Mr. Page.
So one thing I do want to bring up, since Commissioner Jacobson has brought up contingency and what we can do better. And one thing that um, Josh and I have a pretty good hold on um, what our departments are requesting and we make recommendations for approval. You will never see, well, I won't say that, very seldom. Do you ever see an item come up for contingency transfer um, that we have not said, yeah, we we need to do this? But if the board is concerned about contingency, the board also needs to remember that we have just spent the last year and a half, two years spending monopoly money from the federal government. And we've kind of gotten used to that. Contingency is not that monopoly money. Um, so when you see a special project that comes up um, and the the widget that we want for downtown um, stagecoach or whatever, if it's not budgeted for, um, we're going to we'll be requesting that the board um, go through staff to take a look at what you're requesting prior to it be being on the agenda. And then we will tell the board that we're recommending denial um, based upon um, where we are with the budget. Now, that doesn't happen often, but we've all gotten used to having a little extra cash around to address some of our pet projects. And that cash is quickly drying up and I'm I'm fearful that maybe we've gotten um, used to having that around and um, and and it won't be here much longer. So just food for thought when you're looking at things and while we can take this out of contingency. Keep in mind that if the sheriff has a significant issue where he's calling staff out for twelve, fourteen, sixteen hours and he's got fifteen guys and SWAT out. That's not budgeted for. So at the end of the year, when he's got, he's a million and a half over on his um, overtime budget because of significant events. That's where that funding comes from. So that's part of the reason why contingency is there is to address those emergency situations as well um, on on personnel costs as well as operational costs. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacobson here again. Um, thank you, ma'am. I agree, uh, Mr. Page. And when I was going through this budget, I I can't help but think that there were many times when during meetings, we would just, and when I say we, I'm going to say me, approve things. Uh, just said, well, we can use contingency money. All right, let's do that. Let's go for it. And and I don't I don't think that uh, that kind of rubber stamp is what what I want to continue doing. It needs if something comes up that's necessary and it's necessary, yeah. But I felt I feel uh, just being honest. Um, I felt like many times this year, I just rubber stamped uh, contingency money. And I don't think that that's taking care of the taxpayers' dollars to best their bills. So I am going to do a goal of mine this year is to be a little more prudent for sure. Thank you.
So a rule of thought to go by in a board meeting is if there's an item on the agenda that's going to be coming out of contingency and you don't see Mr. Foley sitting in the room, it's probably supported. If you see Mr. Foley walk in the room shaking his head, that poor department, that poor department head is going to lose five to zero. That has been that has been the tradition now for at least the twelve years I've been in this position. If he walks in standing behind you, you're telling this great story about how wonderful this widget's going to be and he's standing behind me shaking his head. No, I might as well just go home.
So um, in any other comments or questions, do we want to finalize this portion or just move on, Josh?
Madam Chair, I do believe we have um, Mr. Russ here to give some participation.
Oh.
I get disidured by the candy dish. Uh, Russ Wright from Dayton. I have a question for Josh or for Mr. Foley and then a comment. Mr. Foley, is your middle name Merlin? It is not, but I like that name. My comment is, uh, the last budget session that I participated in was a four and a half day fistfight that resulted in one of our commissioners quitting at noon on Friday, resigned his position on the commission. I'm I'm impressed with and you gentlemen that are sitting here are part of it. The commissioners that are on Zoom have more of a part in having developed a management style and a professionalism to your department heads that you can finish a budget that's however many millions of dollars that it is in half a day. To be complimented. Thank you. There's nothing to sign in, so I'm just going to sign off on the budget.
Hey, Mr. Right.
Thank you.
You you know, I would like to make a quick comment on that. Um, obviously, you know, I get called the senior on the board all the time. But I can remember my first couple of years on the board and the job view that we were talking about earlier as we uh, headed into a recession. And um, we had those long drawn out. I don't remember commissioner quitting though, but we did have those long drawn out all day meetings, served lunch, dinner um, in the chambers. And we had a lot of gumballs um, thanks to Commissioner Roberts to uh, play with. So um, I do believe that we've learned to work very well um, with staff and all the departments and ton of that credit goes directly to uh, Mr. Page and Mr. Foley. And uh, don't want to leave people out, but department heads across the board um, that all work together to get us where we're at today. So the reason why we're having a what looks like a shorter meeting is because what we don't see in the meeting is all the many hours that these gentlemen and ladies in these departments put in prior to getting to this day. So uh, Mr. Wright, thank you for recognizing um, the efforts that we've had in Lyon County and and what we've achieved by doing so. So with that being said, Mr. Foley, I think at this point, the best thing is for you, just go ahead and go through everything you wanted to do and then we'll button everything up at the end.
Okay, that's good. If you would like to move on to the special districts, we'll take them along to the third of the agenda.
Just just a question. Uh, thank you. Uh, since we have individual agenda items for these other budgets, wouldn't it be better from a procedural standpoint to go ahead and do the county budget now? And and take each one as it as it comes as as its own agenda item? Instead of going through everything and then going back and doing them all?
Okay, um, well, I didn't. Okay, Mr. Foley, uh, just so I'm I'm clear, I didn't believe we were reading in these other ones yet. You were just giving us the information or am I incorrect?
So I haven't gone through the other ones yet. Um, but I think we can take action on item number five A and adopt the budget for the county and then move on to the Mason Valley mosquito abatement district and I can cover that budget and so on and so forth, because I intentionally have skipped those budgets, even though we passed through them in the budget pages. Uh, so that we could do it that way if the board so choose. Uh, otherwise, we're going to go through all of them and then I can come back to item five at the end and make a motion. Either way, it works for me, but it's whatever you prefer.
Okay, um, yeah, I just thought we were doing it the other way, but that's okay. We can we can break it apart. So we want to entertain a motion at this point for five A. And did you want to note the changes, Mr. Foley?
Yes, ma'am. Um, so we're going to remove the sixty six thousand four hundred and seventy eight dollars from the recommended budget out of the commissioners budget that was set aside for the camera system. We're going to increase in that same budget ten thousand dollars in travel. Those are the only two changes. If the board would like, I can I can take the approximately fifty thousand dollars difference and put that into transfer to the capital improvements fund towards that Dayton government complex.
Yeah.
For that, because it is kind of a one-time funding. And then I would also adjust the contingency accordingly, so it remains at and the ending fund balance, the contingency remains at three percent of the budget expenditures of the general.
Uh, I'm all for, I like that.
Tell a motion.
So I was gonna say, if everybody's good with that, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I didn't catch every word, but um, I will make a motion that we approve the tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty two, twenty three. Subtracting the sixty six thousand four hundred and seventy eight dollars for the um, chamber camera system, putting ten thousand towards travel for possible upcoming Naco events and other board of commissioner travel and putting the rest of the fifty six thousand four hundred and seventy eight towards the Dayton government complex as the changes to the tentative budget.
I'll second that.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, Mr. Foley.
Just because it makes the quarterly entries easier on the the uh, transfer, can we make that just an even fifty thousand and the remainder goes in fund balance that gets transferred?
Absolutely.
Okay, that would be my recommendation.
A second still stand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so next on our agenda is to recess to reconvene as the Mason Valley mosquito abatement district board. First up is public participation. This is for any public participation. Just a reminder of something that's not on the agenda. So do I have any public participate participation? I can't talk today at this time. Seeing none for possible action approved tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, Mr. Foley.
So if you want to turn to the tab for the Mason Valley mosquito control district, it's on page three thirty six of your binder. This does have a dedicated tax rate of eight point three eight cents. As we discussed previously, they're requesting a replacement vehicle, a truck for for their operation. And it does show that we're requesting to spend more money than we're bringing in in the fiscal year, and we budget that way every year. Because some years we have dry years and some years we have wet years and in the wet years, we want to make sure we have enough that we can spend some of the fund balance uh, to treat those. So we are hopeful that next spring will be a very wet year and we can spend some of that money on mosquito bait.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Foley? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Actually, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Vehicle that we're seeing. That vehicle that we're purchasing is was fifty thousand, right? So I haven't been bit by a mosquito very often in December. Do does that vehicle get used outside of mosquito larvae season or is this uh, does it sit? I guess I'm wondering just how much use?
So the vehicle, so you have one full-time employee in the Mason Valley mosquito department. And he actually contracts with the lock we control district, which you'll get to as well, to provide those services for weed control for the the um, south part of the county as well, certain areas.
Yeah, I remember combining that, right?
So he does all of that. That is his vehicle. That's his primary vehicle for everything that he does. And so it gets used significantly. Keep in mind, these are completely separate entities. They have nothing to do with anything else in the county. You just happen to be their board.
Right.
So this is a hip for him to be able to do his job because his truck is about to stop working and he needs to have truck.
I was just curious.
Okay, again, um, if we're good, can I get a motion, please?
Uh, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I move that we approved the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three for the Mason Valley mosquito abatement district board.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, number eight, public participation. Anybody for public participation? Seeing none. We're going to adjourn to reconvene as the central Lyon County vector control district board. Again, public participation. Seeing none for possible action approved tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, Mr. Foley.
Okay, so if you want to turn to that tab in your binder, it is on page three forty three. It's the next tab. This fund covers central Lyon County and it's four and a half cent tax rate, which is vector control. So it does more than just mosquitoes. It does black flies and all of those other things that they need to do under vector control. They have no employees. You have a fantastic advisory board that goes out and spends hours and hours checking to see what needs to be done and working with a contractor that we contract to do the the treatment of that area. So this is a budget. Again, this is one of those like the mosquito, we're budgeting to spend a lot more than uh, we have in revenues for the upcoming years. So we've spent out of fund balance, hoping it will be a wet year.
Any questions for Mr. Foley?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve central Lyon County uh, vector control district uh, budget as proposed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. In uh, any opposed, sorry, lost my thought. Number eleven, per uh, public participation. Seeing none, we're going to adjourn to reconvene as the Walker River Weed Control District Board. Again, public participation for anything not on the agenda. Seeing none, number thirteen for possible action approved tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, Mr. Foley.
Joshua, this is the next tab in the binder, which is on page three forty seven. And they assess eight point four seven cents on land values in their district to provide the weed uh, control in that area. The budget's very similar from year to year. They have seasonal employee that comes on and takes care of that. I, if you have any questions, well, you know. I, if you have any questions, I'll know.
Any questions for Mr. Foley? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion of, uh, approving the tentative budget for the Walker River Weed Control District Board for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Public comment? Hearing is seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Fourteen, public participation. Again, seeing none, we're going to adjourn to reconvene as the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board. Fifteen, public participation. Seeing none. Sixteen for possible action, approve tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, let me kind of control for the record. This is the second tab in the end of your binder and it's on page four oh three. And you can see that our expenses have gone up significantly from the current year to next year. In fact, they exceed the requested expenses, exceed our revenues by a hundred and eighty-three thousand. Keep in mind, this district has no debt whatsoever, so we're not making any principal payments. Uh, we're going to have to watch it closely, but we usually request more than we're actually spending, um, for budgets so that we don't get in a situation where we can't buy supplies that we have to buy. And so we've requested a little more than we would probably actually spend hopefully. Uh, but we'll just have to keep our eye on this district as we go forward.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Foley?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve, um, the tentative budget for the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board as written. For the year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, I guess I should have.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Seventeen, public participation. Again, seeing none, we're going to adjourn to reconvene as the Willow Creek General Improvement District Board. Eighteen, public participation. Seeing none. Number nineteen for public, but for possible action, approve tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, line county council for the record. Uh, this is the very final tab in your binder. It's on page four oh eight. We have the Willow Creek General Improvement District. Uh, it does have a tax rate of one point five six cents. We do levy three hundred and fifty-four dollars of user fees on the tax bill each year to help pay for, repay some of the debt that's been borrowed on this through USDA on the sewer side. And again, there's no contingency, so we're requesting expenses to be slightly more than our revenues. And we usually come out close to over a year. So that's all I have for this one.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Foley? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Willow Creek General Improvement District tentative budget for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three as presented.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Number twenty, public participation. Again, seeing none, we're going to adjourn to reconvene as the Lyon County Board of Commissioners. Number twenty-one, Commissioner Comments. Uh, Commissioner Hockaday.
Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Foley and all the other heads of our departments for all the work they've done in presenting a budget that actually balances, I hope. Thank you.
You hope. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I also want to thank Mr. Foley and all the, uh, department heads for their hard work in this and Mr. Foley personally for putting up with me on the phone the last couple of days, answering some questions that I had. So, uh, so thank you very much. And, uh, one, once again, Lyon County is blessed with an outstanding staff and we should be thankful for that.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Keller. Um, I appreciate it. Um, I want to thank Josh and the staff, department heads, um, getting a vote of confidence from me to you doesn't maybe mean anything to you, but, but, uh, you should mean a lot to me and, uh, you're very, um, your conservative nature is appreciated. Um, and, and, uh, I think that you do an excellent job. Your staff does an outstanding job and, and, uh, thank you very much. We're, you are appreciated.
Well, that's right. We don't have Ken, so that leaves me. Um, I think I kind of made my comments earlier. Um, you know, what it was like in the old days to, to now. Um, so again, you know, thank you, Mr. Foley, uh, Mr. Page, Aaron for putting up for, with them. Um, and the rest of the staff and departments for all the, the great work that they do. Um, I don't think we would be here today in these, this budget the way it's presented now, um, without all the hard work. So again, thank you for, for everything you've done. I'm going to go to public participation. Well, actually I'm going to back up, even though it's Commissioner Comments. It's not on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Page, Mr. Foley, did you have any comments?
Madam Chair, the only thing I, I would like to say is that, um, we have come a long way from when I first took over this position. Um, this used to be a two-day process. Uh, we had it done before noon today. Um, that's large in part to, uh, the board of commissioners, um, allowing us to do our job and trusting the work that we've done and communicating back and forth over, um, the weeks in, in preparation of the budget. So, um, the board has done a good job of, of thanking staff. And the board also needs to recognize themselves for, uh, being effective communicators and dealing with staff and getting their questions answered. Um, and, and addressing issues that they want to see in a budget, which be quite honest with you, this is the first year in twelve years that we've actually had board members say, we want to see this in a budget, want to see that in a budget. So I appreciate those comments. Um, I am very grateful for the staff we have. I'm very grateful for Mr. Foley. Uh, we would not be in the position we're in financially if we had some of the, um, other fiscal folks that are out there in some of the other counties. Um, I think we'd be in trouble. So I thank you and, uh, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, again, Mr. Foley, did you have anything to add? Will you move on here?
Uh, thank you, Joshua, line county controller. I, I just want to let everyone know it's a pleasure working with this board. I appreciate the support and the questions and the conversations that we're able to have. Um, just fantastic people to work with. And I can never say enough about Mr. Page, best county manager I've worked with and I've worked with a number. He's fantastic to work with. And our department heads, we have the best department heads in the state. I have no question about that. And they make this process run smoothly. They're responsible. They take care of the public's funds in a really, really professional man and well done. So thank you all. I appreciate it.
This could be justifiable.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Up the dollars. I should have said any. Just a file of a banner.
Well, I'm just going to end that with, um, you know, I've kind of said it before is the fact that, uh, you know, it's not just our county manager and our comptroller, but literally all the department heads. And everyone that works for Lyon County, whether you're in that building where you're sitting now or in Dayton, you know, dealing with a, a road department guy or whatever. Lyon County people make us shine. And, uh, so it's appreciated. I want to go on to our last public participation. So Mr. Russ Wright, this is your last chance to make a comment.
And he, and he's still from Dayton.
And he's still from Dayton. And in the front row. Okay, well, I didn't see him get up. So, and I didn't see anybody with their hands up on Zoom. So with that being said, everybody have an awesome day and we are adjourned.